Good evening. I'm calling to order the Joint Town Council School Committee meeting of Monday, December 20, 2021, at 6:30 PM here in the McKinnon Council Chambers. First order of business is the meeting being called to order. Second order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor Adams, excused. Councilor Catrona?
Present.
Councilor Daniel?
Present.
Councilor Dow? Councilor Jovan?
Present.
Councilor Lozo?
Present.
Councilor Marketti?
Present.
Councilor Ryan?
Councilor Steves?
Present.
Committee Member DeMello?
Present.
Committee Member Lapriori?
Present.
Committee Member Messier?
Present.
Committee Member Murch?
Present.
Committee Member Shea?
Present.
Committee Member Tomo?
Present.
Very good. We have a quorum of both councils. We can continue. Agenda item number four, consider and accept Joint Town Council School Committee minutes of October 18, 2021.
So move. Second.
Very good. We have our motion on the second. Are there any corrections to be made to the minutes? Very good. All those in favor of accepting the minutes? Anyone opposed?
I abstained. I was not present.
Very good. Very good. Agenda item number five, review the candidate requests submitted by Wallace McKenzie to fill the vacancy on the Southbridge School Committee effective immediately through June 14, 2022, the next time election date, and according to the Southbridge Home Room Charter, Chapter 3, Section 321.
So move.
Second.
Very good. Councilmember DeMello?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm really excited that Wally put in his paperwork to be considered, to join the school committee. I think we've been working on getting a good school committee team together, and I've been excited to see the fact that we have been getting together, that we have been working together, that we have had more real seeming school committee meetings lately. And I'm excited that Wally's wanting to join that as well. I'm excited because I know that he's really familiar with our town. He's really familiar with some of the challenges that we're facing being on a receivership. I know he's also, I got to talk to him a couple times recently after he turned in his paperwork, and it seemed like he was not only aware of some of the challenges that our town is facing, but also with some of the challenges that other towns here in Massachusetts who also have receiverships are facing as well. And I think that's really helpful because right now with the receivership system, it is so, we're still kind of making a path off of the receiverships. And so it is so important for us to be aware of what the other receiverships are doing, what's working for them, what's not working for them, so that we can figure out how to move forward. So I thought that was good, that he was aware of that and staying really familiar with that. I also know that he had a son who was in our school system, which gives him some familiarity as a parent with some of the concerns that might be there for other parents who are here in town, and so would be a good representative of some of the concerns that are here. So thankful that you're doing this, Wally, and looking forward to hopefully seeing you on our school committee soon.
Councilor Marketti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I would like to ask Mr. McKenzie some questions if he doesn't mind stepping up. Hey, Wally, how you doing? I was just wondering, you do understand under receivership, a school committee really has no real power, correct?
Yes, I do.
So what do you think of receivership?
It's a good question. I think that unfortunately, we're in it. And because of that, we had to adjust, and we've been adjusting, what, for, I'm going to say eight years? How about this? Is that better? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think, I think that Mr. Valar is doing as well a job as he possibly can under the circumstances. I think that there, while I don't really favor the receivership, we are in it, we are under it. And because of that, I think he's doing as well a job as he possibly can. I've seen and heard about things that are being done in the school systems that are positive, and I think it's in a good, shall we say, it's in an improving situation. The situation is improving, and I do think that eventually we will be able to be out of receivership. But I think that, I don't know if that answers your question.
That's fine. So what do you think the role of the school committee is under receivership?
Well, I think, number one, that, I think it's important for the school committee to stay intact. And I think the reason is because you'll be starting from ground zero with a new committee once the receivership does end. And I think that they need to be involved in understanding and seeing the process that takes place under the receivership. I also think, and I've been made aware, that the receiver does listen to the school committee and listens to ideas and concepts and is not against it. So therefore, I think that there's an interaction there that needs to continue. And I think that the school committee, I think probably looking at the school committee members that I see now, this is probably one of the best school committees I've seen in quite a while. And I think that that's, I think that they're handling the receivership well, and I think that it's all positive. And I think everything's just going to go increase in a positive manner.
Okay. I mean, do you think your role would be to just support the receiver, to be his cheerleader, to ask tough questions? What would your?
I think that, I don't really understand the word cheerleader, okay? But I do think that the school committee needs to be as supportive as it possibly can be while not going against its own understanding and its own rules and concerns. So I think working together with the school committee and the receivership, I think, is a positive direction.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Councilor Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How you doing, Wally? Thank you for putting your name in.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
A little bit better.
Okay. A couple of quick things. First off, you mentioned the importance of having a good school committee, being united to take over when the receivership ends. What would you say your primary policy goals would be if you get put on the school committee?
That's a good question, and I'd have to get involved with the school committee a lot more, get more hands-on, to see their direction and see what their guidelines and their plans are before I can make any determination on what mine would be. However, I do believe that one of the things that must be, must be implemented is holding the children and the families and the parents responsible for the actions of the students. I don't believe that it should be just dismissed or pushed away. I think that they, I think the parents really need to be held responsible for their children and the children's behavior and the children's homework, the children's conduct in classes. So I think that that's something would be my concern.
How would you go about doing that?
That would take time for me to, again, I'd have to meet with the school committee and see what their direction is and their viewpoints and work with them on it. I couldn't just, I'm not going to come in and just start throwing things around myself.
Okay. Okay. Another question I have is something that I recall from probably around 10 years ago.
How many years?
Probably around 10. It was before I got on the council.
Okay.
Or at the very beginning. And it is honestly a concern. I remember back, there was a school committee meeting, this was before receivership, obviously, where you raised concerns about, or you wanted, you raised an issue about wanting to bring creationist ideas into the school system.
Bring what?
Bring creationist ideals into the school system, which may be 10 years ago.
Oh.
And I am very concerned about that because I honestly don't think they belong there.
Well, you know me.
What is your, what's your take on that idea now? And where do you see, where do you see the schools going educationally?
Where do I see the schools going where?
Educationally.
Educationally. Okay. I think the primary goal for the schools is proper and productive education for the students because they are our future. They are the future of Southbridge. Now, I had asked approximately 10 years ago, you're right on target, approximately 10 years ago, I asked with a group of other people in town, leaders in town, we were hoping that we could have not only Darwin's theory of evolution taught in the schools, but also the counter concept, which was creation. And so we weren't saying we were against one, but we wanted to see both sides of the picture presented to the students. And I don't think that there's something, anything wrong with that.
How would you cover the fact that there's several dozen versions of creation theory out there?
How would you what?
Cover the fact that there's several dozen versions of creation theory out there? It's not just Christian, Hindu and Muslim and various, various other ideas out there.
Well, you see, I'm not part of several different versions. I'm not part of, I'm only aware of two. So that was with, and one was already in place. So I was looking to balance it off with just a presentation, a teaching, that there are two sides to the coin, just like there's Republicans and Democrats, okay? Who's right? Anything else?
Committee Member Lapriori?
I was just so happy to hear that you were back in town and of your interest in the school committee.
Thank you.
I was very glad to hear that.
Thank you, Kathy. And I want to clear up one thing, but I can wait. Martina?
Not yet. Not yet.
Committee Member Messier?
Thank you. So I would just like to speak to your comments about your concern about presenting two sides with creationism and evolution. I taught history for 10 years, and in the curriculum frameworks, evolution is something that is in there, and it is very common for all history teachers to teach both sides of the coin, just to let students know that it's okay to have a voice and an opinion. So I just wanted to share that because I think that it's important, that we keep an open mind on that, just simply because it's something that's in the frameworks that the state mandates, and it's something that is very common for all history teachers who teach that curriculum to teach.
Committee Member Shea?
I just, I just wanted to thank Wally for stepping up to the plate and joining the school committee. As you can already see, it's not going to be an easy thing, but I also now want to remind everyone that the curriculum is not the frame, the part of the school committee that we have any control over. In fact, we have no control over anything. But the state frameworks guide our teaching, and the superintendent and the administrators guide how the curriculum is presented in our schools. It's always been an area that the school committee has not felt comfortable having the knowledge to control a curriculum. But I do want to thank you, and apparently it's going to be a lot of fun this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Lozo?
Wally, welcome aboard. I'm sure you're going to get confirmed. I am supporting Wally McKenzie for one reason. There's no one political issue that's going to sway me on this gentleman. The character and the stand-up guy that he is, he serves on PPP with me. We've had disagreements on subject matter. You're going to have those disagreements. They're healthy. You're going to have to disagree in order to move forward. I think Wally McKenzie's the man for the job. I commend the committee members that are up here now. To actually finally say we have a full complement of school committee is a big step for the community. And for Wally to step up, and I know it's not the best of times educationally, and we can all take our big stick out, pick an issue, and beat it to death. But I think what has to happen is, I was not a fan of the takeover. We already know how it worked out, it didn't. Mr. Jovan and I have plenty of experience in this field on school committee. I think for myself, and I can't speak for my fellow colleagues, but I know that we talk a lot about it, is there is no dismount plan. The state never drew it up where there's a way to dismount from a receivership. This is on you. I can tell you as a town councilor, you've got my support, whether we go to legal aspects, couple up with other towns or cities, see what they're doing. I think what we need to do is, I just don't know how a school committee is going to put a plan together if they don't give you the direction of the dismount. So for myself, with all my experience with Jack that we spent on school committee, you can, you can beat up on Vali, you can beat up on a teacher, you can do whatever you want. The bottom line comes down to is, we need to show a viable governing body, school committee, with the support of this town government, council, and manager, but we cannot just roll over and be internal optimists. My good friend here is an optimist by nature. I share that same characteristic with him. I play to win, and we always win. And that's the way you go into something, positively. You'll never create a, you'll never correct the problem unless you can identify it, and sometimes that's negative. But identifying the problem and then having a solution is the way to be in government. It's okay to disagree. It's okay to say I'm not in favor of this. But make sure you have something as an alternative to move forward for this community. The kids in the school don't have a voice. You're their voice. It has been taken away. Now we need to get it back. So here tonight, the question in front of us is to confirm Wally McKenzie. It's a real simple task. The bigger task is ahead, and I want you school committee members to know if there's anything I can do, or sit down, have coffee, and talk about where we were. We were a level-one high school when they took over. We were on the optimistic train, building a brand-new middle-high school. This town was poised for greatness. They pulled the rug from under our feet. The gentleman that did that is no longer with us. He passed on, the commissioner. We went through two commissioners since. I don't know how many, I stopped counting as far as the turnover in Southbridge, but I think we need to put the brakes on, identify what the problem is, and come up with a solution. And somehow, on the state level, we need to step it up as a council to get this state to turn around and say, this is what you have to do in order to get out of underperforming. They had an equation on how to take you over, but they didn't have the equation on how to put you back in place. It's been a disaster. I made no bones about it. We need to turn it around. You are now a full complement of school committee. Mr. Vali has no reason not to deal with you. There's only one person on the school committee that's been here long enough to remember the beginning. Of course, she might have been here when George walked across Delaware, that would be Martina. But I've shared many political discussions with Martina Shea. She's Southbridge first. We disagree on issues. We need to get together the school committee and as a council. We need to hold the state accountable, not Vala. Vala, Vala is an individual, it's a different kind of animal. I've had my differences with the gentleman. How do you get out from underperforming? When they turn around and say, your district's doing well, the state, but we're second from the bottom in MCAS. If we were second from the bottom in MCAS, when we were in control, they would come in and take us over. So the hypocrisy on the state level continues. You as a school committee member, don't be afraid to stand up. I know you do have a point in the school committee that will stand up. They do have that type of backbone. That's what we need, and we need to do it together, as a council and as a school committee. But tonight, in front of me, my friend, a fine gentleman that serves on council subcommittee with me, he's got my support 110%. Thank you for putting your name forward, Wally.
I would like to say one thing. This is not a disparaging remark towards any previous councils, but from what I see with this particular council, I see much stronger cohesiveness and the ability to work together. I see also that, from what I understand and what I've heard, the school committee is in the same fashion. If I'm appointed to be on the school committee, I am not going to be a thorn in anyone's side. I'm going to be as cooperative and as supportive as I possibly can be, but I also won't deviate from what I think is right and what I think is best for the children of our community. With that said, I rest my case.
Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I'm going to support Mr. McKenzie tonight. Now, we've talked about differences. I don't know if me and Mr. McKenzie can be farther apart on some pretty big issues. I'm going to add another one from tonight. However, I know the character of Mr. McKenzie. I know the work, the leadership he's given, both in the faith community here and in government as a former councillor. He's experienced, he's connected with the people, he brings a different perspective I think is needed. I fully support Mr. McKenzie tonight.
Thank you, Jackie.
Committee Member Murch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Mr. McKenzie, do you, if you're appointed this evening, do you intend on running for reelection in June?
That's an excellent question, and I anticipated it. I would not be putting my name forward now if I didn't plan on running for reelection. However, I also want to see how this goes up until June, and I will make my final determination in June, but I would say as of now, that's my plan.
Okay. And have you met with Dr. Valar or any member of the?
No.
School district before this?
The only person that I have actually come across is Ms. Gullikson in the school office, and she's a queen in my eyes. And she speaks highly of him. I think I met him once as he passed me by and said hello. And that's the extent of my involvement with Dr. Valar.
All right. And would you support the, would you support the school doing community service within its central office, but to reach out to the community and have our students help out? Would you support that?
Okay. I think that that's a function of families to make a determination, not necessarily a school. I think, I think it's, if it's done on a volunteer basis, where they are offered the opportunity to serve, and they decide that they, something that some of the students would like to do, I don't see anything wrong with that. But to mandate community service for children, I'm a little skeptical of that.
All right. That is all. Thank you.
Councilor Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, my question follows up on what his last question, which is, how would you go about encouraging families in our district to get more involved in the schools?
That's an excellent question. And it wouldn't be me who's going to do it, but it would be the school committee who would do it. But working with the school committee, I would encourage that we have more involvement with families, inviting them for, number one. I know that there's some kind of a school program where kids are learning bilingual, Spanish into English, English into Spanish, and I think that that's dynamite. It's a great step because that's what's going to help your MCAS. If the kids can't read and understand the questions, how are they going to pass MCAS? Okay? So I think that we need to involve the parents more. A lot of times, the parents don't have the time or the resources, the ability to come to many meetings, but I think through letters, through invitation, through, you could have like A to Z or A to D, and parents with the last names, A to D would come to a meeting, and then parents, in other words, make it small groups so that they could be able to do it, and try to invite them to get involved and show them the importance of encouraging them to work with their children on their homework. A lot of the kids, I mean, when I was growing up, my mother was never around, my father was never around, I had to do all my homework myself. But my son, I promised, when he came home from school, we sat down and we went over his homework from fifth grade all the way to graduating Bay Fat. And that's what they need to understand. It's important. Anything else?
Committee Member Murch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, through you. I do appreciate you putting your name forward. You are the last piece to the puzzle of a full school committee for the first time in quite some time, and I can tell that you're very passionate about the town. Me and you have only met in passing a couple times, but it definitely shows, and that's what the school committee and any, honestly, any committee in the town government at this point needs, is passionate people that want to get involved. And I'm extremely grateful that you're helping fill this board for the first time in quite some time, and I look forward to working with you in the future and reviewing with you where we're moving towards. Like Councilor Lozo said, I think we have probably the best mindset that we have right now on the school committee than we've had in a long time. And I think that your view as an addition is going to help give us an extra boost to move forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Councilor Steves?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Actually, this is just a comment, it's not specifically a question. I was thinking, I did state my initial objection, my concern, but I think I'm going to end up supporting you for a lot of the same reasons that you just stated. I've seen how you get involved in town boards and commissions, and you have, you have presented ideas and asked good questions, and the fact that you're involved matters. It really does matter. We may not agree on some things, but you're a good man, and I think you do have a place in the role. I may not necessarily agree with some of the things that you agree with, but that's okay.
Thank you very much, Gus. Appreciate what you're saying. One of the things is, and I don't know how you, I'm sure we all feel like that, but there are some people in Southbridge who look at Southbridge and say, well, I live here, but, you know, so what? Not me. I love Southbridge, and I was brokenhearted when I had to leave. I left for three years and I came back because the people that I, I sold my house, and I had to move, and people offered for me to come and live with them, and I did for three years, but then when they sold their house, I had an opportunity to come back home. I love Southbridge. To me, this is a fantastic town, and it's got a great mix of people, and that's a positive. When you have a great mix, you have a positive. Anybody else? No? Thank you very much. I appreciate.
We'll move on to agenda item number six. I'd like to entertain a motion to vote to appoint Wallace McKenzie to the school committee effective immediately through June 14, 2022.
So move.
Second.
Very good. We'll have a roll call vote.
Councilor Catrona?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Jovan?
Yes.
Councilor Lozo?
Yes.
Councilor Marketti?
Yes.
Councilor Ryan?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Ms. DeMello?
Yes.
Ms. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Murch?
Yes.
Ms. Lapriori?
Yes.
Mr. Tomo?
Yes.
And Mr. Messier?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good, it's unanimous of all present. Congratulations, Mr. McKenzie, you're now a member of the school committee. This time I'll take a vote to adjourn.
Second.
Very good, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present, thank you and good evening.